The first item is the introduction of form for visitors. I don't believe we have any that have signed in. Would that be the case?
Correct.
All right. Public hearing of the two thousand and twenty five proposed budgets. So I'm going to read this verbatim. Having been duly published at least ten days before today's hearing on the Indiana Gateway Online Website, notice to taxpayers was provided for the EVPL budget estimates and requested tax levies for two thousand and twenty five. Following this meeting, any ten or more taxpayers may object to a budget, tax rate, or tax levy by filing an objection petition with the proper officers of the EVPL Board not more than seven days following today's hearing. The objection petition must identify the provisions of the budget, tax rate, or tax levy to which taxpayers object. If a petition is filed, the EVPL Board shall adopt with the budget a finding concerning the objections in the petition and testimony presented. Petitions may be filed in person at EVPL Central to the attention of the Evansville-Vanderburgh Public Library Board, EVPL CEO, COO, and Director of Finance. Now, I'd like to open the meeting up to the public and call on Director of Finance Lori Tomlin for summary of documents distributed to the Board and update of budgets and levies requested for two thousand and twenty five.
So all budget forms were reviewed by the DLGF Southwest representative during our two thousand and twenty five DLGF virtual budget workshop and estimated budgets and corresponding levy rates were calculated for the prescribed method of the DLGF at or under the state maximum growth quotient of four percent. The same information was shared with the City Council prior to their regular meeting on Monday, this past Monday, the September the ninth. Before I go any further, I would like to introduce and welcome Willard's Executive Director, Greg, Greg, sorry, George G. George Carter to our meeting as well. Based on the notice to taxpayers, the budget Form Three in your packet, the total estimated budgets for all five funds are under the maximum allowed, and that maximum is twenty-three million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. So we're approximately fifty thousand dollars under the maximum budget growth. And this does allow us to remain in a non-binding status. The estimated levy request for the General Operating Fund is the amount listed at the Civil Max Levy as populated by the DLGF, even though the percentage of difference reflects a point oh seven on top of the four percent over the maximum growth quotient. This is due to rounding of the nearest dollar when the abstract levy is calculated and levies are certified. The maximum levy is requested by EVPL because, as you see on the notice, our property tax cap credits earn a little over two point five million dollars, and that reduces our actual levy received by the library, and then we have to make up the difference in the levy amount with other funding sources. For the board members, I'd just point out that this is a reflection of the changes that were made after the first reading that I issued out on Friday, August the ninth. And so that is all reflective of the debt service that we talked about. Main helping us maintain the neutrality of our tax rate on our debt service fund, and that was because of the assessed values coming in at seven point nine percent, almost eight percent, and we had calculated or Baker Tilly had calculated using a five percent growth model. And so we wanted to make sure that we stayed within our tax levy that we currently are requesting and have for our debt service fund.
Friday, August the sixth.
Our meeting was August eighth, so it would have been August the ninth. Am I right? Am I off the day?
August ninth is Monday.
September ninth was a Monday.
September. Okay, I'm wrong. You are, of course, right.
No, I'm just double checking. Yes, August the ninth. And then at the bottom of the Form Four Bs entering your packet, I just want to remind everybody, we use a conservative eighty-five percent of the assessed value. That's reported in case those change, there are changes to that assessed value later on in the fall before the DLGF certifies the assessed value for the year. Those do, rest assured, equal out so that the library's levy rate is no more than the four percent increase and what we've requested. The debt service will be based on the December thirty first, thirty first, two thousand and twenty-five bound fund balance, because we can't exceed more than fifteen percent of our two thousand and twenty-six payments. And it sounds really strange, but where they look ahead two years on those particular types of items. So that's what the levy rates are requested for. And then, of course, we request four percent on top of the current levy amounts that Willard receives, so they will maintain their point oh one six seven. Again, if there are any changes this fall, the LGF will make adjustments to that, and we'll get that in the form of what they call the seventeen eighty-two notice. And then the budget. Any questions?
But entertain questions or comments from any taxpayers present and or the Board at this time? Hearing none, I will move to close this hearing. I hear motion. Motion, second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. Moving on. Our correspondence, you should have gotten the folder. Everybody said a chance to look at that, I hope. And then we go to the consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. There's a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of passing the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Governance. Hearing on additional appropriation. Here we go again. Executive summary of the requested action by Board. Secretary has presented proof of publication of notice to taxpayers appearing on the matter of an additional appropriation proposed to be made on the account of the renovation improvements to the Oakland location and the purchase of equipment and technology upgrades throughout the library district in this form of affidavit, affidavit publication in the Evansville Courier-Press on August thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. I would like to have a motion. I will entertain a motion to approve the proof of publication.
The move.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item, additional appropriation resolution for general obligation bond. The library is funding this project through the issuance of a general obligation bonds. The proceeds from this bond issue must be appropriated prior to being spent on the project. Notice of this hearing was advertised as presented by the Secretary. Like to open the meeting? And call for any questions, comments?
Let's see about the hearing. The amount of the bond?
It's three point nine six or three million, nine hundred and sixty thousand.
Any additional questions, comments?
That's for Oakland, is that right?
Yes.
And not for North Park?
North Park was part of the two thousand and twenty-three.
I thought.
Any additional questions? You're studying.
So is it going to be actual to the physical plant or just additional furniture and equipment or what?
So the renovations that so as per the facilities master plan, there are some internal changes that are going to be made, adding a family restroom, adding some small group rooms, basically the same kinds of things that we did at McCullough that we are doing at North Park. Oakland has a little bit more to do outside, obviously, because they have the green roof, they have some structural pieces outside that are used for programming. And in discussion and overtime, we are also looking at adding on to the meeting room because that is a very highly used meeting room, packs our story times. So adding a little bit of space square footage to the front right side, if you're looking from the outside to the building.
And I write to say that Oakland is much larger than all it was, is?
Um, no, they're plenty closer in size, actually. Yeah.
And same amount of money for the bonding, roughly?
It is mostly due to that additional out external piece, I believe. And the addition.
We doing the roof?
We're not redoing, we're redoing, we're looking.
In some way.
Yes, yes.
Putting new plants or whatever you have to do.
Yeah, yeah. Probably some steam additional kind of walking pieces similar to like those outdoor instruments that are at CMO, you know, think about something like that along that roof path so that there's a little bit more to engage with and participate with on the roof. But yes, also furniture and equipment as well, and new carpet alter out, same, same stuff there.
Any additional questions from board members or taxpayers? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Move.
So moves, do I hear a second? There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Oh, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Additional appropriation resolution Exhibit A. Is this correct, Lori? Are we on the right spot?
Mm-hmm.
After the hearing on the additional appropriation, the Board must approve the appropriation of the bond proceeds to be spent on the project cost before any bond money can be expended. Unlike appropriations of top tax dollars, this additional appropriation of bond proceeds is not required to be approved by the Department of Local Government Finance. I will entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? I gotta do a roll call vote on this one.
If we could come up with this, right?
Yes. Exhibit A. All right, roll call vote. Sabrina. Dr. Huff.
Aye.
Dr. Stubbs.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. We need to do Exhibit B now as well. All right. This final bond resolution establishes the amount to be borrowed, maximum term of repayment, and maximum interest rate. It also contains the details about bonds such as the form of the bond. This resolution also approves the forms of the second supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking, the registrar and paying agent agreement, and deemed final certificate. The Securities and Exchange Commission requires that a library enter into a master continuing disclosure undertaking before it issues bonds. It basically requires that the library agree to annually provide certain types of financial information to the SEC's EMMA database and provide notice of certain material events on a timely basis. This is Exhibit B, and I will entertain a motion to approve this final bond resolution.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Again, this is Exhibit B. Hearing none. I will take a roll call vote on the approval of this. We'll start at the other end. Rick?
Aye.
Bob? Dr. Stubbs?
Aye.
Dr. Huff?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries unanimous. Think now we are at central renovation rebid. Would that be?
I don't have anybody down.
Yeah.
Oh, well, whoever could do it.
Would you like to do it, Lamont?
I don't have the paper.
You don't have the papers for running?
We have to talk about it.
Here. Okay. I'll do it.
Okay.
Clearly, I'm gonna do it because I have it in front of me. So we did rebid the central renovation project, which was also part of the two thousand and twenty-three bond. We changed the scope of the project, and we submitted, we received four complete bids for the scope of work redefined. The lowest base bid was provided by Dyke Brothers, however, discussions. Go. However, discussions to look at deduct alternates were discussed between us to get us to our lowest bid minus the deduct alternates, right, minus the deduct alternates, which led us to a low bid from Empire Contractors for three million, two hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred dollars. Their anticipated schedule assumes a start date of October first, however, that will be negotiated once we start any reconstruction meetings with your approval. So we would like to move forward with Empire Contractors taking deduct alternates one, two, nine, eleven, and twelve. There we go.
And you'll find that in the
Yeah, I'm just rereading Sacks' memo, really.
So moved.
There's a motion. Do I hear a second? I'll second. I can.
No, second.
Okay. I can second.
On his chair.
Can't do that either. Yeah, a motion and a second. Discussion.
What were the changes, the alternatives that were changed?
So what was?
The one, two, nine, eleven, twelve.
Okay, if you looked at the backside of that page.
Here?
Yep.
Front and back? Oh, cool.
So the cross out ones are the ones that we are not accepting to move forward with? No, that's not right.
No, I pick it up.
We did not add those. Those were adds. The ones that were crossed out, we did not accept. They were adds, right? And we are accepting.
Got rid of that.
And a deduct. And a deduct, and we did not, we didn't approve any of the adds.
Did not take any of them.
But didn't we approve that deduct? Didn't that one?
In English, just tell me what are we doing or not doing that we were not doing or not doing before?
That's a great question. That's a better question because this, this has an error on it. So we're not doing any of the ones that say add, so we're not adding anything to it. The deduct that we are not doing, oh, I see. We're not doing the second floor lobby ceiling, so that's a deduct from the price, which we're not doing the second floor studio at this time. The entry door hardware. That was, there is a base bid to work on the doors. This was in addition to that, so we're not adding that one or taking that. And the PMC desk, redesigned PMC desk.
So the adds that are crossed there are not being taken. The deduct, one deduct that we are not accepting, that we are taking, is crossed out. All the other deducts are not crossed out because they actually deduct from the
I see now. I understand. It took me a minute.
I know. I'm like, I know it's right.
You're supposed to deduct from the original base bid.
Those are crossed out.
To get you to the new low bid.
Or add.
So it's a negative deduct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We are doing the rotunda's renovation, which is the two on the second floor, the what is now called the quiet study and the magazine room. Those are to be renovated.
Not that it would matter, but we had this exact same conversation and
Forgot it. Like, I know it's right. It doesn't logically look right to me.
No, I, I called the architects, too.
I'm not an architect.
Is it all those double negatives?
It is.
It is. Is there anything the staff thinks we really should be doing or not doing that we're not doing or not doing?
Well, there's a lot.
There's a lot.
No, I really think this is essential and not just a nice thing to have.
That is a lot of what we discussed internally. And when we have packaged Central with North Park on this two thousand and twenty-three, we were never going to get to everything we needed for Central. And so we did have to make hard decisions, and we do hope to work with Empire with your permission, obviously, as them as our contractor, to see if we can still value engineer some of these and possibly work on some different pieces as well. But there were difficult decisions that had to be made.
I think one of the comments were made in the building of grounds that if you don't get over that same hurdle, I think you're mentally going to challenge it right now, is that all of the important client-facing pieces are being addressed and taken care of. But some of the other items, and I'm going to paraphrase, that were nice adds for the staff or did some things that would have made it, you know, a more appealing location are the things that we didn't do, but the things that make the library function as a library for the clients, that those were the things that are in there.
Yes.
The essential things for operation are all in there. Yes.
Correct.
Based on the amount of money we have in the bond to expend.
Were there any essential things that we're not doing because of money or essential things that are going to really impact our functioning?
Anything?
No. We so, so we did discuss the doors. We talked, one of the big things here is our entry facility, you know, getting in and out of the building, securing them at night is the main part. So we did make some concessions on the doors, just trying to fix it because adding slider doors and some of those things is super expensive. So we pared down the project from having the nice doors like we have at North Park and we have out at McCullough right now to try and make it work. Some of the back of house stuff we are still doing in the base bid. It was in the base bid originally. It's in this bid now. But we didn't take a lot of the adder pieces for the HVAC, some of the bigger stuff. We'll, we'll start budgeting forward on taking care of some of that or possibly
Function.
And everything's still functioning.
Yeah.
We are still functioning. No problem. The biggest thing that I think that we are conceding on is probably the doors and you know, we're going to do what we can to make what we have work with some repairs.
No, and I would, I would add that, you know, one of the comments that got made during the building of grounds, and we've had these several as we've gone through these bonds, is that, you know, we need to get our, our facilities to where they need to be, and then need to be much more mindful on an annual base go forward to use allocated funds to maintain these so we don't find ourselves ten, fifteen years from now in the same boat, having to fix a whole bunch of stuff that just got overlooked over time.
That'll spend a hundred thousand dollars this year, then five million dollars five years.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yep, dime today, a dollar tomorrow.
Eric, I have a question. So did the discussion come up that minority contractors within the primary bidding, as we had discussed at the last couple of meetings ago?
Yes, that did come up during building of grounds as we talked about the rebidding the project to make sure that that was very clear because I, you know, as, as you realize, we've found that there were actually guidance that we had as an organization from the past, but also to bring it top of mind that we're being mindful of that.
What I would like to see is like the outcome at the end, like what those amounts are because we keep having these big contracts. And I just I would like to kind of keep track of it the way the city does, like at the end of the fiscal year, they actually have a line item that shows where the minority contractors, what the expenses.
As it, and I'm not, I haven't looked at the city stuff in a long time, but you know, what I'm envisioning is that there's some kind of documentation, you know, from contractual obligations or bond issues that this percentage or this dollar amount actually went to minority, women business owned. Okay, I mean, I think that's a doable thing. I mean, I'm not, I mean, over time, it's probably something that we have to figure out how to do with our contractors.
Yes, we'd have to talk to the general contractor because through the bid bond process, bond bid process, we don't control who they're, who they're using. We can say that we, we request to have minority businesses bid the project to be looked at, but we, we can't control who they use, otherwise that's kind of circumventing the system. But we can check with them because like I know we've used Danco, Danco is a woman-owned business. So there are, there are instances where we can talk to these different companies and find out who they're using and, and what their status is.
I'm just gonna say this out loud. I think it would be reasonable for those people that we, we have contracts with, we put this in there to, to specify their request. We want this information from you, you know, as a condition of future work.
Yes, sir. And, and we can probably, if, if we move forward with Empire, we could probably ask them that immediately to include that with their contractors.
I can't imagine it's anything that all of them don't.
They know it.
Yeah, they get it.
Hundred percent.
I will also just add that Rick put me in contact with the Small Business Development Center, and on October second, I'm attending their Supplier Development Program kickoff, which helps larger entities get more information into the hands of small businesses and for small businesses to understand our processes and for us to understand from the small business perspective as well. So we're working on that and through another lens as well.
And it's not specifically small minority-owned business, not just small business.
Yeah.
So I have, this is the affirmative action policy section in our RFP template. So are we, are you aware of that? Is that what we're speaking to?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, it has.
And the resolution that we found historically was included in the recent bid as well. We included that resolution in the bid.
Okay. So it says they, any successful consultant shall submit written assurances upon request that the contractor will provide equal opportunities to qualified minority individuals. So whatever they're doing, if whatever this is, if they could provide it, I would just like to see that in all these large amounts of contracts that we're having, and in that way, we could at least track it. And maybe there's something more that as the board that we could do to kind of help to attract minority and women-owned businesses if, if at the end of the contract, we see that it's not been successful.
Okay.
I will also reach out to the North Park. This is a question for Steve. As I read that resolution, I don't think there's a dollar component to that resolution whatsoever, which is one of the reasons I was I was inclined to talk to Heather about the small business opportunities coming up. But as I read the resolution, I don't think there's any obligation on any contractor to supply us with any amount that they're doing, you know. So I think that we continue to move in that direction and to see what opportunities there are. But, you know, the school corporation is contracted with a lot of these contractors, too. One of the issues that, as you pointed out, Lamont, is that they may subcontract with minority-owned subcontractors, but since we don't have an open book bid here, we would never know how much that they spent with those minorities. But we could contact them to see if they are using minority subcontractors, which is a great start.
And if they would share it, they might want to share it, like it would
Sure, it never hurts to ask.
To share it. It's called opportunity. Outside of the larger projects like the renovation projects, we can pull information if we have like the list of people or companies that are on the minority women-owned businesses. We can hold the information if we're paying them directly. We have the capability of doing that, and we could do that moving forward. Thank you.
I don't know. Do we, we have a motion for that one?
Motion in a second.
Yes.
Motion second. So we're in discussion. So all, any additional discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. North Park, FF and E. Somebody doing that one?
Yes, it's me again. So for the North Park Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Package, we received two complete bids for the scope of work that we defined. The lowest base bid received was provided by Corporate Design Incorporated and included all cost fees, prices, permits, as defined our construction documents for a total of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixteen cents. Yeah.
Entertain a motion to approve some.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I'll add some discussion. We actually were offered some alternate, alternates as well from Corporate Design, and we'll be working once you approve for us to work with them so that costs hopefully should come underneath that two hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Is this just language? It says construction duration will be blank, be blank, but it's furniture and
Yeah. Yeah.
It just means delivery or something.
Correct. Yeah.
Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution to establish Evansville Promised Neighborhood Grant Fund. It's a resolution in the package. Do we need to read that for the record?
You don't have to.
Okay, then I won't.
I, I
You should.
All right, you're going to be punished. Resolution to establish an Evansville Promised Neighborhood EPN Grant Fund, whereas the EVPL has entered into a partnership agreement with the University of Evansville, U of E, who will serve as project manager for the Evansville Promised Neighborhood Project EPN, and whereas U of E has been awarded a federal grant by the US Department of Education and EVPL will be considered a subrecipient of the federal funds from the EPN grant. And whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Evansville-Vanderburgh Public Library finds that an EPN Grant Fund needs to be established to receive money from the U of E. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Evansville-Vanderburgh Public Library do hereby establish the EPN Grant Fund for the purposes of receiving money from U of E and use of the fund in accordance with the purpose of providing literacy, liter of providing literacy, litter, literacy. I'd get hung up on that word.
Yes.
Providing literacy programs and services to improve child academic and development outcomes within the EPN community. Duly adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Evansville Vanderburg Public Library at its regular meeting held on this day, twelfth day of September twenty twenty four, at which meeting a quorum was present. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, you need a motion.
No, I thought we had one. That's why I didn't read it. Okay, all.
Someone took a motion.
Ready. There's a motion in a second. Right?
Right.
Okay, discussion.
What's the geographic area of this?
Uh.
Roughly, you don't have to give.
So roughly for us, it means uh the areas around East, Central and Stringtown. Those are our three library locations that are within the Promised Network Neighborhood. Yeah.
And my question is, do we have an anticipation of um, the amount of funds that we will receive from this?
It, it goes around two hundred and sixty.
That's what I was thinking too.
Over multiple years.
Yeah, it's a five year grant.
Five years. So over that, it'll be two sixty.
Yes. And so what that is including on our part is, Erica, correct me if I'm wrong, um, our Thousand Books Before Kindergarten, three hundred by third, a new initiative that we will be rolling out with EPN, but then also to everyone called, what did we decide it? Baby Explorers. We just titled it last week. Uh, and Book and Cook. Storytime to Go and Book and Cook. There we go.
Right.
So one brand new initiative, but taking our other initiatives and really getting them into the hands of the families and youth in the Evansville Promised Neighborhoods.
Right. Do we plan to have those in the facility? There will be outreach in the communities?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be working with the partners in the grant to get them into the hands of people directly and have them in our facility.
Additional questions?
I just add that the purpose of this fund is that we have to expend the money first and so that we don't use the ability to expend our own operating budget. We expended out of this special fund and then we will be reimbursed by UE for those dollar amounts.
Okay. Any additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. I believe there's a signature page.
Yes.
So you're.
Yes. Our special funds.
Okay.
I.
Finance report.
Now you get a break.
And.
I need your thing. I just stand around the finance appropriations report. All right. So at the end of August, as of um our, for our operating budget, we have a balance of sorry. My appropriation budget is on the back of the sheet you're now signing, six million, six hundred and thirty eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and forty two cents or approximately thirty nine percent of the budget. If we could expand that on a one twelfth basis, we would be at thirty three percent. So we're on target of just less than uh a month's worth of excess uh budget that we haven't expended so far. We are keeping an eye on several different categories that we are running tight on and uh looking to um transfer some funds towards the end of the year to offset um those areas where we've gone over the, the initial budget. Uh, but we should be in pretty good shape. Long as our utilities don't skyrocket for weather reasons.
Insurance and repairs.
Insurance, um, we have, is going through in your packet today, uh, because we just renewed our insurance on August the fifteenth. So that will come through. And then the repairs area, um, we have some additional things coming this last quarter, four months of the year. For the investments report, as of August thirty first, twenty twenty four, we have a balance for all four funds of fourteen million, eight hundred fifty nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. The average daily yield for August was five point three two eight nine percent or down um a little less than a hundredth of a percent. And the average daily yield year to date was five point three six three zero or down um a little over four hundredths of a percent since July.
Yes. Um, as of the end of the time period of this, we have total invoices which have been paid of nine hundred and forty four thousand, thirty six dollars and forty three cents and two payrolls which were paid uh for a total of three hundred and forty nine thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and two cents and five hundred and three dollars, one hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy seven cents. Uh, and as those all be approved by the board.
Second.
Motion, any discussion? Hearing none. Motion in a second. Hearing, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Other business, employee handbook revisions, Lisa.
So the latest handbook uh was approved by the board in March of ninth of twenty twenty three with a small revision on February the eighth of twenty twenty four. At which time we were notified the board that we were doing an annual review. I sent an email to EVPL board members on August the thirtieth stating EVPL was, will be presenting it at the um meeting today. Um, so all those um changes were included in the documents that were sent um as well as on board book. And um so we are requesting that the board approve the employee handbook revisions dated September the twelfth of twenty twenty four to be effective as of September the twelfth of twenty twenty four.
So move second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. So one of the updates on page two says, and where applicable, volunteers of the library. Um, is there a standard process for folks to go through for becoming a library volunteer? And will they be given, is, are volunteers given a handbook?
Correct. Well, that's why we added that to this one because we are, we used to have just a small that wasn't really all the way up to everything that we have and feeling that they should hold to the same standards as all the employees. We did um add that section for that. That way they will be reading off on it as well.
Okay.
So yes, once you approve this, in the future, they will get the. Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Just a general question. Do official volunteers get the badges?
Yes, they do. Yeah, they do. Yep. They're just like one of us. They just don't get paid.
Oh, in the, in the technology world, I have a question. Added new employees' use of information technology and resources, personal devices. All personal computers, desktops, laptops or notebooks should only be used at home, not at EVPL for work purposes. Can a, can a personal device connect to our network?
I'm gonna let Heather or Scott answer that because that is actually a Brett add to that.
Tell me what page that is.
Well, it's one forty three, page thirty one and employee handbook.
Uh, so the reason this has changed is to update the fact that staff wifi not be used to connect to personal devices. This is not my personal device. This is my work device. If I brought my personal laptop in, I have to use public wifi like everybody else and not use our staff wifi. And basically that's.
Well, that's my question. Can you physically take a personal device and connect to our network?
You're not supposed to be after this.
But could you today?
Uh, it would be very, very difficult the way we have our wifi connection on the staff network. You almost have to be a member of IT to know how to do it because of how it was set up. Because there's some things that are hidden that you have to have IT help you with to get.
I mean, I, I, I think this is a good ad. I just, it concerns me that the possibility exists that you could have done it.
Uh, nonsense.
After tomorrow, we're not, I mean.
Yeah. But there's. Tomorrow by policy, but physically.
Correct.
You, you would have to be an IT specialist to really know what.
I think they've already changed some of that that I couldn't add my, I haven't tried. I haven't tried. So you have, could you do it? No, there you go. There's, there you go.
We have our public wifi that you connect to. The staff wifi is a hidden network.
Correct.
And you would have to know the information to log on to that hidden network.
But could you if you knew that with a personal device? That's my question.
If you knew that, but we don't know that. That's an IT.
If you know how. What happened was when they switched, they basically kicked everybody off staff. And so when I looked at my phone and I said, I'm no longer connected. Can I? I, how do I get reconnected? Cause I couldn't do it on my own. And they said, you can't.
So we did have an issue with people connecting with their personal device.
What we used to before.
Which, which we have now put technical things in the way as well as.
I don't know that we had a, a real issue. I think it's really because of our cybersecurity.
Yes.
It's more to protect us from anything that's.
No, I mean, if you could, you had an issue. You just may not have known it or it may not have ever bitten you, but you know.
Okay.
It is possible.
They, they've changed hidden network so that if you have that old information, you wouldn't be able to get on the new hidden network. It's, and you have to go to them like for people who have a cell phone that is located where by the library. I take it to them. They lock me on with, because they have their own separate password and everything.
And those of us who.
Not good to me.
Yeah. And those of us who may do any work from home use VPN so that you're using your personal device, but you're connecting through our servers and through here.
So, so now you're allowed to use your personal laptop to connect our network. And so maybe this is a discussion for another time, but what, what do we have in place to prevent malware? Viruses and all those kinds of things that you may pick up on your personal device while you're connected to your network when you connect to our network.
Yeah. Would it be possible that we just tabled this and next month have somebody from the tech section, the IT section come in and give us a briefing for five or 10 minutes?
So.
So.
Yes, but can I counter?
Mm hmm.
Can I counter that even if they give that to you, would you want to change what we're putting in the handbook?
To say.
To say that you can't use your personal devices on our wifi. Cause this is specific to, should not be connected to our wifi. So your personal, that's specific to this.
So, so from my perspective, I would just soon pass this because then it puts it in a policy format so that if somebody does figure out how to do it and they do it, we have something to hold them accountable for.
But also check the technology.
But then I also want to have as your, per your suggestion, I think that's a great idea.
Yep. We can do that. Brett, you're the next staff spotlight if you're watching from home.
Are there any additional questions or comments about? Believe there's a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Pretty thorough. Took a long time every week.
It took a long time.
Good job. Good job.
Greatly appreciate calling out the changes.
Yeah.
As added, updated and highlighting them.
I was hoping that would help. Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. You're welcome. It was a lot of work, but it was worth it. Anything to make it easier on you guys. Okay.
All right. Holidays and closures, Lisa.
So hopefully this is the only revision this year. Um, so um, the holiday closure uh revision was in your packet as well. The library administration would like the holiday event to be a breakfast for twenty twenty four. So the date selected is Friday, December the thirteenth. This will take place at Central, therefore EVPL is requesting to have a delayed opening of no later than eleven a.m. Um, the EVPL is seeking the board's approval for the revision of the library's closures scheduled for twenty twenty four. Uh, we did have it on the document that we, we were kind of looking at a date originally, but that's kind of what we decided on. And of course, it's Friday the thirteenth, so.
So move.
Exactly.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Now you can hold that Friday morning for your breakfast.
There you go. All right. Lisa, twenty twenty five.
So EVPL is seeking the board's approval for the holiday and library closures for uh twenty twenty five. That was in your um packet. This year was pretty easy because everything, the way it fell, we didn't have to do any special closings for, because of the weekends and et cetera. Um, but we are um wanting to um again, um as we usually do with the West Branch closing it during the Fall Festival. Um, and then also as we've done the last couple of years, the week of twenty uh, the week of December, the twenty second and the week of December, the twenty ninth, that we close all EVPL locations at six P M.
So move.
Motion, second. Motion in a second. Discussion.
Why did it have six P M?
I'm sorry.
Why do we close at six P M?
Uh, Scott brought that up a couple of years ago. Um, he, because of just.
It's way down over the holidays. School is out and they're on vacation. So the study time's not necessarily needed. So it, it allows us to turn the HVAC down a little earlier and just let the staff have a work getting off at six and it gets us to cover when people come in during the day or staff during the day because basically hours to shift down. If that makes sense. Change in staff costs. We just have more. No, staff cost doesn't change, but it, it changes how many people are in the building during the busy time during the day because we're pulled out basically.
And a lot of people like to take vacation during this.
Things like that. It takes a holiday.
It helps with that.
So it helps with coverage, especially at the small libraries. Thank you, Lori.
Can you talk a little bit about the um August third? I think that's new if I'm not mistaken.
That is the only new thing added.
It's all Heather's idea. It's great.
It's not just my idea. It was a lot of people's idea um wanting to do something for the staff and their family. We've been trying to do, as you know, we did some library Olympics um after hours events and we've had great reception and participation in those. And we've had more feedback that we'd like to do something more for the families of the staff as well. So um I have already been in contact with Burdette Park and they are holding this day until I hear from you guys as a Sunday. We chose a Sunday in August A because we are done with summer reading. So it's kind of our own little summer celebration. But in closing on a Sunday, we only close Central and it's not a closure to the rest of the system. So it's a minimal change to our regular operational schedule.
And we don't have to pay to get into the book.
Correct. They're giving us a very nice nonprofit deal.
Yep.
As a partner with them.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Additional questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Could I just um have a comment on that? I was all for it, but because Central would be the only library that would be open on that Sunday. Like, how would you advertise to the community that it'd be closed like far in advance? You know, because I'd be thinking, well, I could at least go to Central on Sunday.
So we always post our closures, I believe, at least two weeks prior to the closure on the doors of every location and on social media.
I can send posters uh to it's uh here in the business, so if anyone wants to just inform all of them, it's a day on the third close. So that way I will do that January.
For the whole year.
Yeah, and all of our closures are also open on that day.
And do we post it any place like in the facility?
Yeah, on every door, every single door. Yep.
All right. Beforehand.
Yes, like two weeks in advance, like two weeks. Yeah.
Right.
All right, next item. North Park, our now, uh, we have disposal of furniture and equipment. Lori.
Uh, we have a number of items that we no longer need. They're damaged or they're out of date. And I've provided a list for you there uh uh under the recommendation of our bond legal counsel because we had uh discussed with her uh some things about McCullough. So these are non McCullough, other than the modular staff desk, these are non McCullough items, but because uh we are if approved, transferring them to a nonprofit which is the foundation, then we don't have to go through the steps of the advertisement and making sure that they're under certain, that portion of its weight. So this is just the list that we'd like for you to approve to transfer to the foundation um in accordance with Indiana Code thirty six, twelve, three, five C.
I'm moved.
Motion, second. Discussion.
Do you have a question? What is a book bike?
So there is an old bike that was actually donated by a former staff member and it was used for picture in your mind, a bicycle with a little uh box on the back of it that was used for like a hot dogs move, move, moving hot dog stand or ice cream bike.
To.
It was.
Don't take books to.
Absolutely. It was designed or donated to uh use with outreach. Um, it's actually only ever been used once or twice in parades. It's just not feasible, the way that it's designed is not feasible to take exorbitant amounts of books out.
And my guess, it's just one gear.
It is, it's one gear to bring your bike.
It's on an old Schwinn typhoon, right?
I think it is.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, if there's no value to it, they usually recycle it or, um, dispose of it, however, um, we need, the, I will point out, the hundred and ninety-two Dell desktop computers are only worth five dollars a piece, and that's because we take out all the, um, guts of it. Uh, we can't sell them with the operating system in them, so we take all of that off. And so it's basically a shell. Uh, we do offer it to, uh, we've had problems trying to sell them, the foundation has to the public. And so at this point, we just offer them to our staff and we'll have a few of them come in and purchase the desktop, the monitor, the keyboard, the whole set for twenty dollars. And then those are the people who like to tinker around and rebuild computers.
So I think that answered my question, but I ask it every time.
Yes.
We have assurance that there is no library data or anything.
Correct.
There's a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. North Park renovation change order.
Okay, so as discussed with the building grounds committee, I'm bringing to the board, um, change order number two for North Park in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. It is for four different items, uh, doing modifications to the front door. Uh, once, once construction began and, and they were doing discovery on how we're going to install the new sliding doors, it was discovered we needed some additional construction work to support that, uh, door to not move. Uh, window repairs at alcoves, um, which was the most expensive part of this. We've had a problem with the windows leaking for very, a very long time out there at North Park on just our alcoves, not the regular windows on the building. Just little outcroppings that we're changing into meeting rooms and offices and, uh, we had to, uh, pull all the siding off and, uh, reseal and fix some, uh, window problems that we had at the bottom where the water drains out. So that's been taken care of. Uh, the drywall ceilings, we had to pull the ceilings down and all those alcoves because years before I was ever here, we had a problem with the, uh, sprinkler pipe freezing above in those alcoves. So there was a of work, not a change order, but work done a long time ago that they came in and they pulled those ceilings down, spray foamed everything and put the ceiling back to try and insulate above those alcoves. And as we're putting new lights in these alcoves, we couldn't remove the lights because they were all spray foamed into place. So we had to pull all that down to be able to, uh, get the lights out. So there's a change order for that. And then the restroom floor framing in the new staff area, the circ workroom, we're putting in a staff restroom. And as they were, we, of course, out there on a raised floor, so we were on a nine inch basically computer floor. And as they were trying to pull that floor up to add the plumbing, uh, the VCT flooring that was stuck to the top of it, every time they pulled that up, it ripped the metal off the top of the panels that the raised panels. So we basically ended up destroying that floor in there. Um, and so instead of going back with raised panels, we went back with a, and there's a picture of it. Went back with a, uh, framed floor. So wood frame floor and the changes for that. So total of all four of those was thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars on change order two.
We entertain a motion for free. Motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Staff spotlight. Erica.
And special guest.
And special guest.
I'm Erica Qualls Barnett. I am the programming manager. This is, I'll let you.
I'm Kelly McDaniel, programming librarian.
We are here. I come every year to talk about the success of the summer reading program and this year was what, above and beyond our expectations. Before I get started, I have to give a couple of shout outs. One to Faith and our marketing department for creating this visual. Yes.
I commented to Scott that this was the coolest thing. I love, I love composition books.
Yes. Faith always manages to take the theme and just blow me out of the water with it. It's just amazing. So all of the reading logs looks like this, just in different colors. So you guys got my favorite color here, purple. Uh, to summarize what happened for the summer, so I wanted to give Faith and the marketing team a big shout out. Also, it is a committee of, I don't even remember how many people are on the committee, probably between sixteen and twenty staff members who work from September through August to make this successful. So while Kelly and I are the ones up here, there's a bigger team that really put a lot of work and effort to make this so successful. So giving them a shout out as well. As you can see on the first page, registration was phenomenal. We went up thirty-six percent from last year. Uh, so we had a little over forty-six hundred registrations and we did a breakdown by the ages. So we had five age groups this year, uh, which is one slight difference from last year. We broke up one of the, uh, the six to twelve age groups so that we had five different ones. Um, you see the example of all of the reading logs up here in the different colors that Faith made. So each one of those was individually designed um, to match the age group in the reading and activities that were required for each one. Uh, we also had registration prizes that included some fun EVPL branded materials, but also a lot of coupons donated from local partners. Um, those are always a hit, so we appreciate our local organizations and businesses that support us. We had kickoff parties at four of our locations due to a lot of the construction at McCullough and uncertainty of North Park. We decided to have, uh, kickoffs at four locations instead of all eight, and I think that went over really, really well. Uh, certainly made the staff a little less stressed out that day because we didn't have to have so many parties. Um, but they were all very well attended. On the next page, you can see the activities and programs for June and July. Not only did people earn entries for reading books, but they also earn entries for participating in activities. And we had a list of suggested activities that they could do to earn these entries. Our most popular activities are down there on the bottom left. Um, the most popular one was visit a park. So we were trying to really get people to go outside, um, attend a library program was second. Uh, and then build, play a game outside. So really pun intended, playing on the theme of trying to get people outside and playing. Another really cool thing that we did this year is we made one of the suggested activities using an item from our library of things collection. And as you can see there, um, throughout the summer from compared to twenty twenty-three, circulation went up thirty-one percent for our library things collection. So they were well utilized and I, I know having them as an activity really helped make that possible. Um, there's some statistics about our programs. Once again, programs very popular. One of our most popular ones is featured on the next page, Animal Tales. If you've never had a chance to go, you really should go. Doesn't matter your age. Um, my favorite year was the kangaroo in a diaper, but they haven't brought that one back for me. Uh, but this one is one of our most popular ones. You can also see how many activities were completed compared to last year. Um, hundred and seventeen percent more activities were completed in just a year. So I think the public was really looking for ways to engage with us and with the community and to get out and have fun. Um, so we included a lot of pictures for you to enjoy there. And then I'm like, Kelly, finish.
Turn it over to the next page. Um, on books read, you can see we continue with the pattern of, um, more engagement with the participants and our patrons. Um, the total books read reported this year were sixty thousand, four hundred and thirty-five. That went up by about fifteen thousand books total from last summer. So that was awesome. You can see too, we still had about one thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight people, um, that actually got finished completely with the, with the reading program and received a completion prize. So overall, a lot of engagement this year with our patrons and community. Um, and we also like to include information each year about our summer volunteers. It's a special teen volunteer program that we do, um, each summer. And we had forty very excited teens that signed up, um, to help at various locations and some of our departments as well. Um, throughout EVPL throughout the summer, you can see they earned a total of a little over one thousand hours, um, community service hours. Many of them use those for school and resumes and, um, college applications and we're, um, we're happy to help give them some experience and helping with different programs. You can see they like to help with our bubble fest program in one of the pictures. Um, and we're very grateful for having the young teens, um, be able to do the, the person in a bubble activity because there's, there's a lot of squatting involved. So you know, younger knees. Um, so yeah, we, we do appreciate their help with that. Um, yeah, overall, very successful summer.
Do you have any questions for us?
It looks like registrations and total books read were up by about thirty-three percent from the prior year.
Yeah.
Was there more marketing? Was there more staff involvement? What did that?
I think it was a combination. We definitely had more marketing. I think, um, we did a whole training with some of the staff on upselling at the desk. Like if you're already checking things out, if you're already doing this, did you know about this program? Um, so I think it's kind of a combination of word of mouth, marketing. Um, we had some really cool prizes for registration. Um, then there was a midpoint prize where they got to spin a prize wheel, which was pretty fun. Uh, and then a cool completion prizes. So I think it's just a combination of a lot of things. Um, I still think we're rebounding from the pandemic and people are just getting more and more engaged each summer from my perspective.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Who knows?
You know, there's a, I'm proud to be a part of EVPL and do, you know, very minuscule role compared to what you all do. But this is the kind of stuff that really makes you smile, you know, to see this kind of impact and those kinds of numbers. Well done. Thank you.
I would just like to say that the visuals are really nice. I see we are, over the past four years, I've been on the board, like we make suggestions and you, you've taken it and you've come up with a document like this and it's very impressive and thank you so much.
Yeah, I will send that to Faith. She, I give her, we give her ideas and she just, what she comes up with is amazing. So she's watching. Good job, Faith. Thank you.
Announcements.
Just one brief announcement for me anyways. Um, just wanted to remind you all that, and everyone that our, uh, speak events have kicked off. We had a great one this past week and I also wanted to commend our programming staff because it was a great event. The author was fantastic. Um, and I also wanted to commend Kelly because Kelly stepped in at the last minute to moderate that and introduce our speaker and really appreciate her doing that and, uh, everything they did from all the behind the scenes stuff, getting the stage ready and the A V, all the people that went on to that, um, the people that were here in attendance really enjoyed the speaker. He was very entertaining and informative and it tied right into our summer theme of play. Um, he was talking about the importance of play, not only for, um, young folks, but also for adults, and it had a nice adult spin on it as well. Um, so I just wanted to commend them for doing that because it tied into everything they've been doing and they did a great job. Everyone behind the scenes just did awesome.
And the next speak event, our last one of this year is on October twenty-fourth. It is going to be at Ivy Tech and it is Victoria Christopher Murray. I knew you'd want me to do that. See, I just looked over there. She's like, good job. Yeah, I knew. I, I could feel it. I could feel. She's like, don't forget to tell them the next one. Yeah. And on the twenty-fifth, we will announce our twenty twenty-five speak lineup because it is already set the entire year next year, which is awesome because we usually don't have that done. So to have all our contracts in place and to be able to kind of tease that out to the public and announce it is, is really great.
I want to give a shout out to our fearless work member who has, was honored, the Women's Equality Day. She snatched up the, uh, little flyer, so I couldn't show it. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your speech was, was great too.
It was.
We thought so. Not me. There was, there was a speaker and she, she was.
Yeah, well, all of them were very good.
The timing was good. Thank you.
Any additional announcements? All right, I will move, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Okay.
Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We are adjourned.